Meeting to order, the City Council Work Session for February 18th, 2020. Roll call, please. Sue Ryan.
Mr. Mayor, presently noted.
Thank you. Council agenda and meeting anyone? Hearing none. Financial statements, 4A. Anything? Matt, anything in particular? No? Okay. Moving right along. Presentation, sidewalks. So maybe what we'll do, Roy, if you're up here, we'll go ahead and see the presentation and ask for comment. Normally you don't do too much during work session, but we'll make it a session. Thank you.
General control.
Not yet, I'm afraid.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Karen Hoffman, City Engineer, come talk to you about sidewalk program. My initial talk came in July to talk about sidewalks and where we thought we wanted to go with that in response to a couple of comments that had come from citizens, et cetera. So we took together some information to bring back to you in our possible program. So, a couple things to know, but as Roy put it, no one intentionally let sidewalks fall behind. Just cars have become more the thing, keeping up with growth and motorized transportation's expensive. Bikes and cars, as it says, became fun and popular, but not really necessary in most cases. And sidewalks were viewed as a necessity. So, some of the reasons why we're in the situation that we're in. Sidewalks help us to do what we've already decided needs to be done. The Council, this lines up the Council goals of diversity, inclusion, and equity, and of course, housing sustainability. As noted on there, sidewalks reduce pollution, can provide a portable transportation route, obviously, or walking, accessibility, increase mobility, livability, good traffic for small businesses and tourism. And, you know, the bottom line, which is, I don't think is the most important one, but it's very important, is ADA is a federal regulation, and we are required to comply with those rules. So what are the issues? We've got broken minutes in sidewalks and our safety concerns pedestrians. The lack of sidewalks in ADA ramps also significantly affect the disabled community. And there's people that travel in the roadway to be in adequate facilities. I've seen people in wheelchairs, I've seen people with baby stores in the roadway because there aren't other facilities for them to move around. I'm going to quote this to you, this is what the code says, basically says that, you know, property owner is responsible, and that if you're doing a new project, now you get more than $30,000, owner is required to build a sidewalk. And that if the property owner doesn't want to, we can direct them to do that. So what we do currently, we have a really reactive program right now. The code enforcement goes out when a complaint is received, they expect it to require a fix. The property owner will get a permit, and the cost is borne by the property owner. On the engineering side of things, if there is a development project that comes in, we do require sidewalks to be installed. We require the installation for any remodel or addition over $30,000. And then also we do install sound and repair as part of larger capital projects. What can we all advise? You've been doing Project Sidewalk, and I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next line. We had monthly meetings with citizen applicants, Roy, need one, to develop steps forward as we move forward in this. We also have, obviously, public houses for capital projects to talk about the sidewalks and how they're important in those terms of things. So Project Sidewalk is a project that came out of the universities of Maryland and Washington. And the idea was to use artificial intelligence to help assess sidewalk conditions, using industry, doing those types of things. We haven't gotten passed into artificial intelligence yet, but we put it as a crowdfunding thing. So, Washington DC was the first municipality that they promoted this software out in. We were the second after Washington DC. And actually, we're the first ones to actually be complete. Washington DC is not yet complete, obviously, but I wanted to note the awesome participation in our citizens. We had over 264 local users contributing to the data, 311 helped validate the accuracy, and Newburgh is 100% accurate. One thing to clarify with this is that the information that we received, it is based off a Google Street View, so it's a little bit older than what's out there. So, and then there are, some of the information that we received is pretty generic, so we still have to go out and send people out to actually find out what some of the locations are, and I'll show you some pictures here. So one thing we found through the inventory that we have is the gap. Just to fill the gaps on an existing street is a $14 million issue. That's pretty huge. There are approximately 154 ramps missing on critical routes, and about 152 ramps that are unsuspected on critical routes. We haven't actually gone out there and determined whether or not they need standards today or not. The ADA ramps, their standards have changed over the years, so we have some ramps that may have missed standards when they were stalled, but they don't need today. So, you know, we have a kind of a variety and a spectrum in that scenario. So here's some information that we received from Project Sidewalk and additional inspections. So we've got, obviously, some air deterioration, cracking, site treatment, issues of those types of things. In a lot of places, trees and sidewalks don't mix well together, especially in older areas where we have a really small planar strip and really big trees that can stall, that comes a problem. So, the critical routes, I'll note that a little bit, the map is not as great as at this scale, but they were identified by a group back in 2007 that balanced selection criteria with local knowledge, using lane uses, black water, drought, vegetation, and barriers. The list of streets is down below with the map aside. So those are the routes that we would focus on, those are the first priority routes. So, what can we do to move ourselves forward? We now have an inventory, and we're still verifying some of that information that we received, but we can establish a proactive program with some funding, we can do a lot more public awareness and education, and reaching, and there's a list of areas that we can do that with. We have been talking with LACI about different options and providing outreach. We've already put together a low-page flyer that we can start handing out to people about sidewalks and those types of things, getting it on website, and reaching out to other community partners, realtors, contractors, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot more we can do on the public awareness side that people just don't realize sometimes, what the impact could be of having a sidewalk and not having a sidewalk. Things, additional information here, some typical costs, it's not cheap. $7,000 per ramp. Each corner has two ramps. There's about $4,000 for, to do an apron in an alley, that's the approach, the driveway approach for the alleys. A single sidewalk is about $600. So, typical frontage is about $6,000. So, for, and that's a typical, you know, someone's front yard. So, it's not an easy thing, you know, if someone came up to me and said, you need to come up with $6,000 to put your sidewalk in, that would be a struggle, you know, and probably the most difficult. And then other, you know, the cost for a ramp. So, we talked in more detail in July about these other jurisdictions that have sidewalks around. The one that we're going to propose is a lot like Beaverton's, but we've added some other things to that, so just kind of, we'll look at it and move forward. So, so the first question is, who pays for this? That's complicated answer. And so we will come up with a proposal for how we might move ourselves forward. So the program would be, we would have a voluntary residential compliance for the first two years, with, as we noted, the additional public outreach promotion, let people know, you know, that it is their responsibility. We had some other options, stack resources, funding, looking at other grant and loan opportunities. And then after two years, the city will go out and proactively expect and implement the code that we have the ability to do. But we wouldn't do that right away, we would do a lot more public outreach and education first. And then we put together some options for grants and loan progress. So the first is a residential grant program funded to begin with at $25,000 a year, first come, first served, one grant per property owner every two years. The city would reverse half the cost, not to exceed $1,500, plus another $500 if it is caused by a tree, from the tree removal replacing cost. And then we would also provide a list of prequalified contractors that people could call to make that work. And then we implemented a residential loan program. So this is the next piece of the residential properties only, only one loan per property owner. It could not get a loan if it was condition of development. So, say if someone came in to develop and they're going to build brand new house, they would not be able to get a loan to do this. This is mainly for existing property owners that have the issue. Again, first come, first served. The idea would be, estimate the cost of projects over $25,000, with the maximum loan amount to exceed $6,000. The interest rate would apply for monthly repayment, and there would be a lien on the property for repayment to the city property seller. And then, one of the last pieces of the puzzle that we were looking at is city permits. And today, we already have $25,000 that we have in our maintenance budget, and we would prioritize those to deal with barrier issues, actual smaller projects that, you know, we can put in one ramp and all of a sudden it opens up an entire four or five walk, you know, route for people. Repairing sidewalks and ramps adjacent to city property, reform repairs. So maybe we could do more repairs, you know, in place of this condition. And then we're proposing to plug in $100,000 of capital, projects into the budget, and where that would be used, priority one would be gas lines and properties. So, more of ours doesn't have sidewalks. So we would keep putting in those sidewalks, and also dealing with how they approach is where they don't have sidewalks that currently work. Priority two would be ramps on designated routes, critical routes. Priority three would be gaps near schools and local facilities, the hospital, print view, some of those types of things. You know, one caveat to that is we are working already with the sidewalks school grant program around Edwards Elementary, doing the planning work, and hopefully be able to apply to infrastructure, actual funding in the next segment. But we still have to have a match on that, so that's where some of this money would go to some of the projects. One thing to remind the city is also doing projects, you know, with capital projects. Elliot Road sidewalks, RV goes on Elliot Road, across when you drive, Cother Street, we can fit, we'll be extending sidewalks on Collins Street on the west side, from Old Crest to Wood Hills. Paved projects, all the paved projects that we're doing, other than the crackup sort of deal, we are replacing and/or adding programs where they don't exist, and we're fixing them, where they maybe exist, they don't need programs. So although we say $100,000 in capital, we're going to be spending a lot more than that on those other projects that are being built. So, that's kind of the proposal. The money, obviously, would be put into the budget, we can see that in the budget documents would be forwardable to start to launch. So with that, are there any questions, discussion, thoughts?
Questions? I have a couple of questions. My first one is, is there, are we already, or is there some way to be proactive about the types of plants and trees that get planted in the right of ways that were preventing it before it happened? So that's my, the first part of my question. And the second part is, if homeowners have a tree that's not mature, but they recognize that it's going to be mature and is going to impact their sidewalk, is there a way for them to proactively seek out a way to remove that and plant something else so that it doesn't end up impacting sidewalks?
So, the first question is, is to be proactive to address the issue. And we have started to. We have new standards in place that require what we call the barrier to be installed, which forces the roots to go down. Obviously, we have wider planar strips now in most cases, which allows for that to occur. We are, we have also been working on planning to change our street tree list. We come up with the proper trees that really, I won't say pride in this, but I admit, do way better than what some of the current trees that we have. Unfortunately, we, you know, with stacked resources, we moved that as far along as we like, but that has been in works for a while. And then, yes, if someone has a tree issue, they can apply a planning counter to have that tree removed, but they are required to reinstall a new tree. So, I think that's a $10 permit?
Yeah, that's right. So it's $10 for street tree removal permit, but when they do replant a tree, they're now also required to put in the root area. So it's not just taking out a tree, having a hole, and putting a new tree back in. I don't know the cost for the area. And the trees, they have to go out into the market and find. We have a crew tree list now, but sometimes people pick the wrong tree, the space that's available, so that's why engineering and planning are looking to retool the list of street trees. Also have to check the availability, if some of the trees moved out on our list now, you can't give anymore.
Other questions, folks? Well, I've got more answers. So on the grant program, are you thinking it would be need-based? I mean, I see that it's first come, first served, but...
We hadn't set up the need-based, we could just be first come, first served, that would only be, that $1,500 would be the most amount that it would be. You know, the one thing that we did look at is, you know, I started with the $150,000, adding that into the budget, and certainly if the programs get used quite a bit, we can certainly look in the next year cycles, can we increase that when we have the money to increase it? The thing you have to remember is that the money comes out of the ass tax funds, and so, you know, and there's a lot of ass for in that of those funds. So, you know, we've talked about going to LED street lights, that would have to come out of this fund. So there's a lot of different things that want to use the same light. So, we start with the $25,000 for each of them once, see, and maybe one hits you more than the other, and go down that path, and then if we needed to add more, we'd certainly look at that and then add more money as time goes on.
Yeah, I think the need thing still is of interest to me, just I think it's potentially, you know, for those who are in particular to you. But the other thing is, I mean, I guess with $50,000 in grant and loans, you're looking at, I mean, if it was all used, I don't know, math serve, 400 feet of sidewalk, basically? Is that realistic, do you think? Do you think we're going to see something like that?
Well, again, as we provide more public education, I think people, and we make it where it's the right thing to do, and we provide some options right now, there aren't a lot of options. We don't have hardship, we don't have any way to help people to do the right thing in front of their property. So, this would certainly help that. And again, if once we get into it and see if it's being utilized quite a bit, then certainly we can look to add some more dollar amounts to it. Mayor, when you talked about needs, one thing we've recognized, and we've been working through the transportation utility thing, and we had the hardship waiver that we had put implemented there, it's been really tough. What documents do you require people to submit to you for need? And so, we've, you know, we've gone back and forth with that, and that's a hard one. You know, if the council thought that that was an important criteria, we certainly looked at that and tried to come up with that. But that's a tough one, too. We've had a lot of people, well, you know, what do you need to see? Do you need my tax returns? Do you need... And how do you, have you looked at that?
Yeah, I probably have some thoughts on that. I'm not even going to make a point, but that's... Anybody else in the other...
So in terms of the public education outreach piece, how, is there a plan set up to do this outreach to the Spanish-speaking community, thinking of the fact that it's first come, first served? I think oftentimes the information takes a while to get to the Spanish-speaking community. And so, if so, what is the plan? What's the name of it?
I don't think we have a specific plan yet. We've been working with LACI, Community Engagement Specialist, to come up with. Again, we started with a simple flyer for people. And then, yes, we may be looking to translate that and get those out to people. And we've been talking about how do we get that word out, and where do we hand those out? And whether that's, you know, in, again, the welcome to Newburgh packet, or if it's at the library, having some things available at the library, health work station would be another one where we can hand those out pretty easily. We've talked about, again, with realtors, having the realtors have them, as people look to buy homes or those types of things, or look into homes, you know, for them to know that, you know, the sidewalk is part of the responsibility, and it provides curb appeal and better things. So, I don't think we have a full plan yet. Still been working through what pieces make sense or don't, in case we need one.
All right. Anything else, folks? All right. All right, Karen, thank you. Mr. Gattico, when you're ready. All right, five minutes worth of there?
We'll take it.
That's an invasive answer. So you can hear all right?
First, I'd like to point out that this is something that requires my law. We have been, Newburgh has been, we've been done in our notes at federal laws since 1976. So this is not something new, this is something that we've simply been choosing to ignore. And the reason we've been choosing to ignore it is because most of the people with money didn't care. That situation's changing, and the federal law, they're getting tighter, the court system is getting tighter. There have been several communities in Oregon who have been hit with Zeddy groups, and I don't want that to happen. That's disruptive for a community. The Department of Justice comes in with attorneys, they look over the town, they make a list of everything that needs to be fixed, there's a requirement, very, very days, make a report of what's been accomplished. It's a mess, and there's no reason you need to be forced to do the right thing. There are an estimated thousand people in Newburgh with significant mobility disabilities. Now, you don't see them on streets because they're not on the streets. Because they had the experience of getting out, going out their front yard, going down the sidewalk, all of a sudden there's a sidewalk ramp that's not there, or there's a piece of sidewalk that's missing. Now, before I need to use a wheelchair, hell, it's no big deal. You know, just take a couple steps and you're through. Now, when I come to something like that, it is a day, and there might well be 15-foot tall wall there. That entire route is useless to me. And what I often have to do, and what these other folks have to do, is to backtrack, go out into the lane of traffic, along with the cars, on the lane side of the parked cars, and go up to the next intersection, and pray that there's a sidewalk ramp there. It's scary. It's frightening. When, there have been several times when I've been very, very close to being hit, as I've wandered around Newburgh. There are several reasons. One is that when you're in a chair, you're no taller than a kid, people just don't see you. Especially if drivers are looking for other cars, they're looking right where it's at. I've had people pull right almost anything, and I don't even see, even though their head is pointing toward me. That's a real issue, that's your problem. Another thing is that I have limited ability to get out of the way. I can't move even half a step to the side. The only way I can go is forward or back. And it takes a while for me to change that direction. So if there's a car coming, there's only really one way I can go, and if that way is blocked by the car, or in the way of the car, I'm stuck. I have no choice. Now, after you've experienced that a few times, you get the message. It's dangerous to go out if you have a mobility disability. It's not safe. People die that way. So, what do you do? You stay home. You watch TV, you may lend a route to the nearest by-mart, Fred Meyer, and go there once a week, and the rest of the time you stay in your house. This is what we are doing to our own citizens. And there are, there have been thousands of them in Newburgh right now. Now, these people have every right under the Constitution to be a part of civic life. And in fact, the ADA didn't establish anything new, it just recognized that, as a citizen of the United States, I have the same rights to participate in life as everyone else does. That's, that's all the ADA says. The problem, of course, is that the ADA has to enforce it. Except for, they do the civil rights issue, except for civil pursuit. So the only way you can enforce it is by filing suit. Hence the Department of Justice, because most people who have disability can't afford to be in court. But this is much bigger, much, much bigger than helping those thousand people. I see a community, right now, Newburgh scanning at crossroads. We have the opportunity to take full advantage of the new industries that have built up around, the tourism that's starting to really ramp up, the new, you know, influx of people coming in and chart a new course. I would love to see a program, Newburgh Walks, and say to people, it's the right to do, walk! Now, this is going to help in several different ways, sustainability, requirement, it helps economically, right? If I'm getting into a car, it's not that much more difficult, one, than I get into a car and drive to Sherwood to shop, as it is, drive down South Newburgh. But if it's a choice between having to wait for a car, or getting in a car, visiting with parking, all that kind of stuff, or walking a few lots, that makes... with parking, all that kind of stuff, or walking a few lots, that makes it an easy, an easy choice. Pay my shot, because I want to eat at a shop, I'd like to eat somewhere, I'd like to eat somewhere, and I'd like to interact with the other citizens I meet along the way. I've never seen two people cross each other in a automobile, having a conversation. It just doesn't happen. The other thing that is important here is that it is economically just. One of the biggest costs that families that have problems affording housing base is the cost of automobiles. And if you have two workers in your house, and you live in Newburgh, chances are pretty good you need two cars. So this household is having to pay for two cars every month. Those costs add up. They drain money that would be otherwise payable to pay for housing or passing. If, if I knew that I could walk anywhere in Newburgh safely, I would longer need to have that second car. But until then, it's a requirement. If I want the second car, I need the second car. The last thing that I wanted to say is that this really is about community development. This is about putting our community together, putting ourselves in each other's way, in a sense, so that we interact more, we conduct business more with one another, and that makes a much stronger community. If I have a stronger community identity, I'm more likely to vote for a school bond, I'm more likely to vote for a library bond, I'm more likely to contribute to activities in the city, I'm more likely to feel like I'm part of this community. And we have the opportunity here to do that. Now, I support this plan entirely, but there's not nearly enough money here. Not near. We're looking at about a million dollars that is going to take just to replace, or just to fill in the missing ramps on our critical routes. Now, if we get this network, critical routes, it means that we should say to every person, wherever you live in Newburgh, there is a safe route from your neighborhood to City Hall, to the library, to the shopping center, to a cultural center. You need those routes to the network. Just like having one through street for automobiles doesn't work, you've got to have an interconnected network. The same thing, it's just people in particular that have car problems. So that's why the network is important. That's why having a piecemeal approach will not fix the problem. That's why we need to have an overarching solution that will persuade our neighbors of the importance of participating by filling in their piece of sidewalk, or by encouraging their neighbors to do so. And I can say that no one, no one has lost money on the value of their property by putting in a sidewalk. So we're not even talking about wealth in the big sense, we're just talking about the short term. So I don't know where the money is. Even if I wanted to know, I couldn't be okay. But I beg of you, please, find the money to fund this program. Find the money so that we can go out and launch a citywide campaign. I'd like to see great celebration that says, you know, we're celebrating this completion of the sidewalks, maps that we can distribute to people, maps that we can put online, so that everyone who holds an Etsy account can use, download that map, and show people how to walk from where they are to restaurants, to shopping areas, to the parks. These are all things that are our most booms to our community. We just take that step. So please, find the money, because this is, this is important.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. All right, Karen, what else do you need from us? Is this for information only?
Right now, it's information only, but obviously, this group, you know, believes that this is the right direction to go. We can start to implement most of the pieces of it without, without another discussion, unless you just wanted to implement it as a policy. Obviously, we're working through budgets right now. If we wanted to plug the money into the budget, we can certainly make that happen. And then the outreach is already starting, and we'll continue to work through that. The biggest discussion for this group is whether or not, again, as we've been working on a reactive mode, and the question is, do we want to move, move to that proactive mode? But it does mean that we will be getting possibly more phone calls from, from folks when we say, no, you need to put a sidewalk in. I'm not sure how many phone calls I've gotten in the last year about, what do you mean, I have to put a sidewalk in? But that would be the other piece of this puzzle, is recognizing, are we moving from a reactive mode to a proactive mode?
Karen, I can just ask one. So we've got critical routes, and this may be an unfair question, but are there routes that are more critical than others? Because, I mean, for ramps alone, that's two million dollars. Are there, are there some that are more so?
Yeah, so in this map, again, this is a little tough to see. The reds are the primary, what's called the primary critical routes. And we've actually done some of them. So Villa Roads on that, you can actually, on a sidewalk, go all the way from 99W to Mountain View on a, you do have to cross a couple times, but you can make that happen. Spring Brook, actually, you can do Spring Brook now, all the way on a sidewalk. Prestview Drive, we're working on that project, this group has seen that, and will be under construction hopefully this summer, so that will provide sidewalks along Prestview Drive. Elliot Road, which is a critical route on here, again, we were working on a project to put those sidewalks in. And then Hayward, we just opened up a large piece of Hayward by doing an intersection improvement on Sifka to make the ramps work. So we're picking pieces off, and, but, and there's, there's some, College Street is the other one I spoke about. We're working with Fordot to extend that sidewalk along the west side from Aldercrest up to Foothills. So there's some of them that are already in the works. And, but then there's some that we haven't touched. Main Street would be one in a lot of cases. There's a lot of Main Street that doesn't have any sidewalks. And then some of the sidewalks are there, but they're just broken. And, and again, that still provides a barrier, so those are the pieces. But that, you know, we could, today, based on the code, go out and say, you need to fix your sidewalk. We have not gone down that path, because the council hasn't been interested, or hasn't wanted to go, go there to where we're actively going out inspecting and writing that code enforcement. But certainly, that's an opportunity in there. But yeah, the reds are the, are the primary critical routes, and those would be the ones we would focus on first. And then we would go to the blues, which are the, I'm not sure what we call them. It's not the primary critical routes, they're still critical routes, would be the blue. And those would be where we would start, start the conversation with people. And then after that, obviously, we would, you know, to their residential neighborhoods. And, you know, all new residential neighborhoods are required to put sidewalks in, and that is happening, so that's a good thing. But that takes time.
Right.
Just to elaborate on that, because I was on the group that put this map originally together. We started out with all of the population of Newburgh on the big map, selected what the points of interest were likely to be, and then decided where those routes were going to go. Divided those routes into three different categories. The primary critical routes, the secondary and the tertiary critical routes. Now, these are all, these are not all the sidewalks in Newburgh.
Sure.
Okay. These are, these are the sidewalks, though, if we get the primary routes, we can say to someone, you can go somewhere in your neighborhood, or next to your neighborhood, and find a route at a pathway to get. If we do the secondary routes, we can say, chances are good, there's a route close to your house. If we can do the tertiary critical routes, then we can say to someone, you'll be able to see a route from where you live. That's the difference.
All right. Any, anything else?
Hi, good evening. Great presentation, thank you. So one of my neighbors got a letter about a sidewalk, and they went out and they fixed it themselves, but when did I hear about it? So while I personally, if it was me, and I was king for a day, would send letters to everybody along the red and blue lines on this map, I also realized that we're probably going to get phone calls and emails and upset folks. In your experience, because I'm guessing you partially know about these letters that go out, if we were to send notices to all the folks who had broken sidewalks or missing sidewalks on these routes, the primary and the secondary, how many letters and phone calls do you think we'd get? I'm just, I want to gauge the scope of the backlash.
It would be a lot. We get them now, because the letters that do go out when a complaint is, is brought in, people don't, when we go out then and inspect the rest of it, we, we look at and require them to fix the entire sidewalk that is in question. And I know the mayor's gotten a couple phone calls in the last six months about, why are you making me do this? It's expensive, I can't afford it, and all of those kinds of things. I can tell you that I've gotten, I'm not sure how many phone calls back when we've required somebody, when they've gone to do a massive addition to their house, a complete second story in their house, we've required them to put in the sidewalk, and they say, what do you mean, I have to put the sidewalk in? That's, that wasn't part of my plan, I don't have the money to do that, you know, and, and it becomes a real challenge. And so I would say the blowback if we did that would be significant, especially without some additional public outreach, and then, and then this group understanding, because you will also get the phone calls, and understanding what that means, and, and moving forward.
So, and I guess, I'll just connect share my feelings.
Fire away.
So I've been thinking quite a bit about this since we got the packet, and since July, when we were talking about it, because, you know, initially, I'm the guy that likes silver bronze and grab it, run! And the issue here is that if we were to put an extra fee, or create a gas tax, or do something to pay for the fourteen million dollar shortfall, and then we went out and fixed all the sidewalks with their problem, all the people who paid for their sidewalks would be really torqued off, and we'd get a lot of people upset at us, and, and I don't know if we'd get sued or not, but it definitely would be a good situation for us. And then I got thinking about, okay, so if we sent letters out, we're going to, it's going to be like Villa Road trees all over again. What I was thinking is that maybe what we should do is a six-month to nine-month program, where it's just pure community outreach, where we say, these are the rules, this is what's required of you, I mean, we do it for sewer lines and water lines, let's do it for sidewalks. And we have the bilingual, multilingual communications go out, we do a little road show, and we basically tell people, look, if your sidewalk is broken, at some point you're getting a letter that says you need to fix that. Here is our list of contractors. Then the next piece of that would be, let's send out letters to everybody where we have identified on our routes, and say, you have twenty-four months to fix this. And hopefully, after our public information campaign, people will be aware enough to see that, yes, this is coming, and then we roll this out. And that's when we also roll out our grant, loan, and city improvement program. Not in twenty-four months, we do that when we're doing our road shows, but I see these grant programs, I'd love to see extra zeros on these, but I don't know where we get the money for that, and include that in our communication. If you want to do this before you get a letter, we have a grant, a loan, and a program, and if you are on a critical route, there's also safe routes to schools and those types of things. That's how I personally would do it, I don't know if the council agrees, but I, that's the only way I can see doing this without taking one on the chin, and also leading a critical lead.
I would like to follow up. I like that idea a lot, and I feel like if I had a thousand people call me and be really angry about it, if there were ten people that called and said, hey, I didn't know, and I will get that fixed right away, I feel like that's our payoff. And I'm also wondering if, and I'm putting you on the spot, if part of that outreach could be having Lacey upload a video on our YouTube channel with residents saying why this is important, like, it's not just a mandate from city officials and city staff, that there, that there are people in the community that are asking for this. And so if we added that to our communications, and that people have a place to go, that they were, instead of listening to me talk about why sidewalks are important, they're listening to someone who, they can relate to why sidewalks are important to those people. And I know your testimony is compelling, but I also know that there are moms that have straws, that there are only mode transportationists walking. If we could get some of those folks to maybe have Lacey do some YouTube stuff, so that when people do get their letter, they could go and see a package that says, this is why we're doing this.
I think that's a great idea. I was surprised how ignorant I was until my wife became blind four years ago, and we had to retire, and just live around the corner from you. And she was trained in Salem by the Commission for the Blind on some beautiful sidewalks, and taught how to navigate, and then we started walking Newburgh, and it was, it was really sad. And her first wish, her first idea was to go knocking on doors and say, do you know who should fix this? I said, that has its risks, honey, they might not even be the owners, but she would certainly love to be on a video, or march, or scream, or do anything to support this, because it makes a huge difference in your life when you can get around, and enjoy that, and save gas, save money, and actually also visit with people. That's part of the retired part. Not everybody has time to visit, but this council member certainly supports expedite this.
You know, to follow up on Jane, I would, I would certainly, in my opinion, encourage inclusion of money in the budget. Certainly, I, I don't think we need to hold out for twelve months or twenty-four months, mainly for fifty thousand dollars, I don't think that's, I know, but if it's an incentive that could get us four hundred feet of sidewalk, in the best case, awesome. So that would be, that's my success. Or fifty thousand dollars in the worst case. All right? Do you have enough, Karen?
I think so.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you so much. All right, folks, next, your viewing pleasure. All right, Chris. Oh, maybe it's, maybe it's...
Thank you. Thanks so much.
I'll sit here. All right. So this is the last meeting we have before our new city management starts. So this is David's last official... So, uh, this is David's last official meeting. Thank you, sir. Um, and then I thought it would probably be appropriate at this point to, uh, to review at least some of the council guidelines, um, and this probably again is trying to make sure we all are aware of our roles as councilors, particularly as that relates to, in this case, the city manager and our dealings with each other. Now, this, or whatever, this'll get a little personal, but anyway, um, for nearly twenty years I've been, yeah, bloody, yeah, bloody, um, so I've been, actually took over for Roy as the executive director or the chief operating officer of a nonprofit in town. The reason I mention that is that the nonprofit that I work for happens to have a board of directors at this point that is fourteen people. So in a, in the analogy, it is very close to what it's like to be the city manager in relation to a council. Now, um, and I think, um, I think that's important, particularly to understand that separation and make sure that we recall what that separation is. I'll tell you, if I had fourteen bosses at Habitat, that would be decidedly difficult. Um, but I have a collection of a board, much like the council. So, next, if I can figure this thing out. I wanted to turn this highlight, you gonna do anything for me? There. All right, council guidelines, page one, number six, you've got a copy in front of you. Make every attempt to resolve any conflict with a federal council member prior bringing the conflict to the attention of the council and/or the public or anything in that way. It is a, um, an etiquette and a courtesy question. Next. Oops. All right, page two, number six. After an issue has been voted on, council members will speak for themselves carefully in a manner that does not undermine the integrity or motives of the council, even if their personal opinion differs from the council's decision. Again, this goes to, this does not speak to there being a difference of opinion, which there always should be. However, as it states, once we make a decision and that decision has gone public, we make sure that it's known that that's a council's decision. Uh, you can say, "I did not vote that way," but, um, that the, the council did, um, and that is the decision of the governing body. Any questions so far? Rule three point eight, page nine. All members of the council should review and observe the requirements of state ethics law. In addition to complying with state ethics law, all members of the council shall refrain from disclosing confidential information. As we know, um, executive sessions are considered confidential information. Taking actions which benefit special interests groups of persons at the expense of the city as a whole. Um, again, you can interpret as to how that might play. Expressing an opinion contrary to the official position of the council without so saying and conducting themselves in a manner so as to bring discredit upon the government of the city. And it can again avoid blame, speculation, and inflammatory language, as is three point nine, pages nine and ten. Be respectful to all, again, common courtesy. And here's what I'm probably getting at with, uh, Dan now on his way. All members of the council respect the separation between the council's role and the city's manager's responsibilities. By not interfering with the day-to-day administration of the city, which is a responsibility of the city management. As I think we've discussed before, we can always ask for information, um, from any staff member, and that is fine, but it is not ours to provide direction to staff members except in a group. So only by majority can we say to David, for instance, "We would like to see the following." Individuals do not have that right. Okay? All right. Um, and refrain from action that would undermine the authority of the city. Again, um, we, we have a responsibility to understand that our chief executive officer or our city manager is the person and the professional that we have hired to conduct the majority of day-to-day city business. Our rule is one of policy and at a broader, uh, more elevated level than the day-to-day operations that are the city manager's responsibility. And, uh, here's where it comes in why I'm saying it, because unfortunately the rules say, "They fall to me." So, rule six point one, page sixteen. Section nine of the city charter provides that the mayor will preside over the head facilitate all council meetings, preserve order, enforce council rules, and determine the order of business pursuant to council rules. So, it, um, it does fall and, and to me it's very important. Um, and I think it's important or more important sometimes when emotions run high. Sometimes I feel that we tend to want to say or do things. The other thing I want to say, and this I probably should have prefaced this whole thing for, and I, I apologize because this should have come first. All seven of us, whether everyone believes this or not, are actually here to help. And I know this deep down in my heart that the seven of us are here to help, as are honestly the majority, if not the entirety, of city staff. But in wanting to help, we do have to remember that there are boundaries as to how we can help. Um, we may have a great idea and want to share it with David or, or Dan and say, "This is what I think really ought to happen," and in the best of intention, we are trying to do something for the betterment of the community. But if it's direction, if it is direction we're providing, then it's probably not correct. So, does that make sense? Yeah? So far, makes sense? Right. Next. Providing that council rules are not followed. Rule eight point eight, eight point five, page twenty-one. The council may enforce these rules and ensure compliance with city ordinances, charter, and state laws applicable to governing bodies. If a member of the council violates these rules, city ordinances, the city charter, or state laws applicable to governing bodies, a majority of the entire membership of the council may take action to protect the integrity of the council and discipline the member with a public reprimand, removal from committee assignments, and/or the removal from the position of council president. So there are, you know, it doesn't, it does not say if there was continued violation of the rules what might happen, but it does say that there are steps that can be taken. Again, I'm just merely reminding to make sure that we can provide as much support as possible without direction to a new city manager. There it is. Any questions? No? Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Um, let's adjourn this session and we will be back at seven oh five. All right. Uh, let's call this, um, business session, the border please, for February eighteen, twenty twenty. Roll call please, uh, Sue.
Mr. Mayor, I'll present duly noted.
Thank you. The pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, presentations, looks like Visit Newburgh this evening. Did Leslie Britta? Uh, the clicker. I got you. One clicker.
Good evening, Mayor Rogers and City Council members. We're happy to be here again to present our second quarter report for Visit Newburgh. So this is encompassing the October to December quarter of twenty nineteen. For those of you new members of City Council, I've added our mission statement, so you just clarify on who we are and what our mission is, is to enhance the economic vitality of the community by promoting Newburgh as a year-round visitor convention and event destination by maximizing collaborative partnerships, efficiently activating the climate logic task, and new and implementing effective sales and marketing partners to cultivate a world-class visitor experience. I listed our board members. I'm very proud of the group that has worked very hard this last year to really get Visit Newburgh off the ground. And, you know, we have an excellent cross-section of industry members who really serve the visitor economy well, and, you know, I just want to thank them for being such a vital part of this organization. And so, a little thank. So, four, four main points of our business goals and strategic imperatives. Um, the first thing is to build brand identity for the destination. Uh, the second is to grow leisure visitor volume and increase our overnight stays. The third is to have community and industry partnerships, collaboration, marketing support. And the fourth is to develop, develop a group market that will bring in meetings, weddings, tours, boards, that sort of thing. And so, just an example of what that might represent, in the past we have met with Oregon Wine Board, Taste Dundee, Oregon State Parks, we're running events at Champaign, talked about Oregon Wire Trail on the Land River, and had other stakeholders who are in cycling wire and food events, as well as media writer visits coming up in the summer. And so, on the building of the brand strategy, just to kind of highlight some of the things that are on this page, we have been very busy working on our brand strategy and finalizing our design process. We've hired a web developer in the fourth quarter. We held a photo shoot in fall to make sure we captured the landscapes of the changing all colors out in the wireies, the vineyards, and we are just finished a lifestyle photo shoot in January where we shot in Rosemaria, that was awesome. And we have been working with Travel, or, yeah, Travel Dundee on implementing a social media campaign that's named "We Have New Wire." It's a plan starting in November and will run through spring twenty twenty. And the purpose for that is to increase awareness of the area, Newburgh Dundee, inspire overnight stays, showcase the natural beauty of our region, and encourage more people to come and stay. And that will be found on Facebook, YouTube, Instagram, and also a link to a landing page that we actually have tracking pixels so that we can see if we have results for overnight stays. So we'll be able to report back on that on hopefully our next, probably, business report. Um, one of the things we also did in fall is we hosted a colonization tour with the Lament Valley Visitors Association and their PR agency. We toured the downtown Newburgh, we toured a side loop tour of the Newburgh Wireies, and, um, both the Wolves and Pupils for a record tour and tasting, and then we finished up with the wine and dinner at Rosemaria. And we've seen some positive results already from that visit of us. As a result of the media placement that we have received in the fourth quarter, including Northwest Means and Events Magazine named "The Allison" as one of the top, the top, um, hotel organ, media event space, and less than two million guest ones. They were also named number one hotel for twenty best hotels in Portland for my heat. And then Rosemaria was named top one hundred restaurants in the United States. And only one of two in Oregon based on diner reviews. I think that's really something we can go out and sell and be proud of. So then in the first and second quarters, we're going to be busy active, back meeting our whole social media marketing campaign strategy, so we'll be launching our website, and we'll be sourcing a PR agency to further get the word out there about all of the great things that media writers should be talking about in relation to Newburgh. On the next screen, I gave a recap of seven years' worth of our transient occupancy tax revenue. And one of the things that we know for fourth quarter, that Newburgh was down three percent in our transient occupancy tax revenue, which I don't like to report things being down, but that's reality, how it was. And Yankton County as a whole was down two point eight percent. As far as how we finished the year, Newburgh was down two point seven, two point one percent overall, Newburgh County was down one percent, and the Lament Valley as a region was up one point nine. So Lament Valley encompasses Eugene, Albany, Corvallis, Mountain Territories, Salem, and Yankton County. So it just kind of gives you a feel of how logging statistics are flowing. One of the things that may have been an impact is the Atticus Hotel within McMinnville in twenty eighteen, and they had thirty-six rooms to inventory there. So that may have had an impact on how much, which shows, you know, they're having more logging stays because of that added inventory there, watching them. Okay. So some of the things we talked about partnerships and collaboration, I've talked a little bit about the, the infrastructure that we belong to, meaning Travel Oregon's kind of mothership within the state, there's seven regions within Travel Oregon, and the Lament Valley is one of those seven regions. So that's the regional destination marketing organization. And then, Visit McMinnville and Visit Newburgh are the two local DMOs that are part of that whole structure. So we do participate in a lot of things that Travel Oregon or the Lament Valley Visitors Association hosts. Um, and one of the, the things that Lament Valley Visitors Association, um, made available to us is they decided to expand in a, in a co-op advertising campaign with Expedia. And so they basically offered to both Newburgh and McMinnville that we could feature two hotels each at no charge. So we ran an ad campaign from September to December of twenty nineteen, and we had some great results as a result of that advertising, and we ended up with twenty-four thousand and change extra added revenue that came as a result of that advertising in Newburgh. And McMinnville finished at one thousand, so we're happy a little more than double for that. And so they will also be running a campaign starting in twenty twenty, and you can set no cost to us or to our hotels, and, um, we'll be featuring the Best Western Travel Lodge this time around. They also is not an Expedia partner, so we're not able to feature that, but we'll feature the properties out of, I don't know, by May ninth as much as we can. But we'll be able to report some hopefully better, or as well as or better news this next time around, it's great. Um, some other things that we participated in would include, we have Yankton County Tourism Partnership Group, which is, is a group of us who are volunteers in the industry trying to advocate for Yankton County within that Lament Valley structure. Um, they tend to, I think that they feel because we have such a strong wine economy, that they don't necessarily feel that we need as much of their attention as maybe Eugene does or Corvallis or someone. And so our group is really there to advocate on behalf of our cities within the county and might support promoting us equal attention and commercial opportunity. And so we, I mean, we're trying commissioners, and we actually requested that they, um, consider appointing us as an official advisory committee to commission, and so we're supposed to be scheduling a work session that we wanted to discuss afterward. And I think in the long term, the hopes, there'll be some revenue mechanism that we will be able to pluck that organization as well, to constitute to being volunteers. And so that's one of the things that we're working on. We hired a tourism marketing manager for Visit Newburgh, and he's going to put this presentation together for us. And then we've just really been talking with a number of organizations, including Newburgh Downtown Coalition, um, talking about some new partnership opportunities or collaborations that we can do together, talking with the Downtown Newburgh Wireies Group about potential off-season activities that can attract tourists to the region. And so we'll be hopefully coming up with some ideas for that down the road. And then in December, we hosted a meet and greet educational event for our vacation and all operators, so that they can understand who is Visit Newburgh and how can we work with them to come up with more promotional ideas for new businesses for them. This is some of the highlights of the partnerships that we're working on right now. From a group market standpoint, we participated in the Lament Valley Wedding Venue Call in October, where a hundred couples came from the Portland area and visited with a hundred vendors. Sometimes we call that a drop fest, but hopefully they remember who they talked to during the day. We've, um, we've been busy meeting with the owners and general managers of the Best Western Holiday and Expressment Travel Lodge to try to really educate them on, on how, some of the things that they can do to increase business at their properties and how we can help support them with that. And those are some of the key things for new market. We're soon going to be able to announce a large event that's coming over Halloween weekend that will bring six hundred to a thousand people to the area over the weekend and launch a guest. So, I'm waiting on. So we're waiting on the final approvals on that event, and we'll tell you more about that. And then this is a recap of how we finished up our, I call it Q4, but it's really Q2 from what this will understand by now, children remind me of that. And so, we had the ending balance of $210,938 when we began the quarter. We had $266,689 in revenue command during that timeframe. We had $50,000 and change for the expenses, and so we had a net income of $216,462. And then we added to the $210,000, we had $1,000 in ending balance, we ended up at about $426,000. And then the marketing expenses will catch up pretty quickly in the first quarter of 2020, because that's when you start seeing all the expenses come through, web development, brand design, all that will talk, and photo shoots. So that's pretty much a recap of how we did for October, December 2019. So we feel like we're having some big progress and good successes. And any questions for me? Okay. So now, I'm going to introduce Fritta Stewart. Fritta is the Director of Luba Minthorne House. She's also the Assistant Executive Director of Newberg Downtown Coalition. She is a Newberg Board member, and she was an active participant in our marketing committee to help us get to where we are with our brand. So we're going to show you our brand today.
Wonderful. Welcome to the evening here, Rogers and the Council. So over the past few months, our board and our marketing committee and our higher creative team have been hard at work developing and branding for our organization. In a way, we share a narrative that kind of encapsulates everything that we want visitors to hear. We follow that messaging that we welcome to hear when they come to Newberg. It's a message that we think is true, believable, but yet still aspirational. And throughout this process, we work really hard to develop this branding and recognize that more and more people are coming to Newberg for a lot of different reasons. A lot of them come from wine, but many of them also come from the restaurants, the coffee, the arts, and the history. And we want us to develop a brand that lets people to taste all of those, and it's not just for them. And one of the best ways that we thought we could do that was through the name Taste Newberg. So if you flip to the next slide. He wants to actually. So this goes over some of our initial considerations that we got through as we were developing this brand. And one of the first things we discussed was incorporating with Travel Dundee. Initially, both of our organizations thought that it would be a really good idea to kind of pull brands and market an entire region and not just one city or the other. But through quite a few deliberative discussions, we both organizations came to the conclusion that it would be better to brand ourselves individually. Both Newberg and Dundee have really unique aspects, and we got from the marketing standpoint that we need to kind of highlight those unique things instead of just meshing us all together as one. So we split, but decided that we can still murder fairly easily for large regional events, but this gives us more marketing freedom as our organization. Something else that we looked at was how we could set ourselves apart from other destination market organizations. Many of them use the words "visit," "travel," or "discover" in their main branding. So just by using the name Taste that we saw on that first slide, that kind of sets us apart right from the beginning. And it also helps us incorporate all of our brand values. Some of those are wine, food, art, history, recreation, exploration, and discovery. And all of those things are things that people have a taste in. You have a taste in art, a taste in music, a taste in fashion, and of course, a taste in food. And all of these things are things that invite you to come and taste what you're interested in, and to come and experience these things, instead of just generally visiting or traveling to a region. So one of the prime big decisions we're going with Newberg Taste was to adopt a brand that was accessible. So visitnewberg.com, travelnewberg.com, and of course, branding based on the just approaches were all taken by other organizations when we started these conversations. And we didn't really want to move forward with branding that couldn't be represented online, and as a marketing, marketing will be a huge piece of what we do. So we went with Taste Newberg because those were tags that were available online. So now, I will move into that narrative that I think I think Colvin mentioned in the first bit of this presentation. This does hopefully encapsulate everything that we want you to kind of think about Newberg. Maybe switch that off.
Newberg, Oregon is a very curious place indeed. It attracts the curious and draws them from every corner of the globe. They come to learn, to experience, to taste, to understand how Oregon wines have taken their place alongside the very best that France, Italy, and Spain have to offer. Why aspiring young winemakers from Napa Valley now dream of the cuvées they can produce in the Willamette Valley? Suddenly, Newberg has found itself in the bullseye center of a movement. A movement of people experiencing life in more subtle and sublime ways, things both serious and playful. Connoisseurs and enthusiasts and curious people of all stripes are now coming to Newberg to learn more, to experience more. Some come to earn a fancy, lofty-sounding diploma. Others prefer something more accessible, like a workshop or a dinner with local winemakers. Couples and friends rolling in classes for a merry merit badge experience, earning their bragging rights certification, and then training out afterward to test their newly or further developed senses at one of our award-winning wineries and neighbors. Newberg is where you stay, where you learn, where you wake up in the middle of wine country. Newberg is the destination that curates and catalyzes the unique DNA of the region, giving visitors quick, convenient access to knowledge and experiences that typically require vast investments of time and energy. Newberg is a gathering place that is utterly Instagram bucket list red. High and low cultures are coming together and raising a glass to curiosity and learning. Newberg is the university of the senses.
Perfect. So you've heard that phrase "the university of the senses" at the end of that little paragraph speech, and that's what we're going to kind of use as our main tagline. That's what one of the overarching themes that we want people to get in Newberg. Obviously, we have a university here, but beyond that, there are so many experiences and so many things that you can come taste, whether that is food, or shopping, or music, and you can learn from those experiences and kind of engage all of your senses in a university setting, if you will. So if you flip to the next slide, you'll see some of the other taglines that we came up with. New experiences, Newberg, new skills, Newberg, and new flavors, Newberg. These are some additional and secondary taglines that you'll see on various pieces of marketing collateral. They kind of follow the entire visioning and marketing theme that you'll see throughout this presentation, and it also kind of correlates with the Newberg Visioning Project that was completed this past summer. So you can, I think, read through those, there's quite a few of them, or ask these out, and we're happy to talk to them. But moving into the visual identity, you get a sense of what this brand will actually look like from a visual standpoint. The first thing that you'll see is our primary wordmark and logo. It's pretty simple, it says Taste Newberg, but that means it's really versatile and flexible. We can use it on various different pieces of marketing, whether that's printed or on billboards. You'll see some examples later on in the presentation, but this will be the main brand identity. Along with this next slide, that is our primary crest. And this will be used, you'll see again examples, but this will go hand in hand with that initial wordmark. They will be seen together and be two really quick visual representations of our word marks. This has that university of the senses arching around the top, so we know that that's a primary theme we want to present. It's kind of collegiate, makes me think of a classroom, so you think of the university just by seeing it, and you think Newberg is a place where you can come learn, experience, and taste. Our next slide shows kind of a visual treatment of the main logo, just kind of so we can use it in different spatial situations, depending on what imagery we have where it fits best. This is just another way you can see that same word. And then here you have them all together and some of our secondary crests. So you see the main ones in that top left-hand side, and then the rest are smaller secondary logos that will be used throughout smaller pieces. You'll notice actually in the bottom right of this entire presentation, we use one of those secondary crests down there at the bottom, along with the page numbers. So that just kind of shows you how these pieces will actually be used. And then we'll move into some of the photography. So this is a great example of how that primary wordmark will be used in conjunction with some pictures. We'll use it in white when we have a darker photo, and then use the darker color when it's on a lighter photo. And it's bold, it's right there, you know exactly what our brand is, but it doesn't detract from the photograph, and the photograph doesn't really detract from the brand mark itself either. That leads us into our color scheme. We tried to pick colors, or our creative team tried to pick colors that are kind of local to this region. You'll see them here naturally. We have a deep river water blue that is a naturally occurring color here, and valley green and peanut red are names that kind of encompass what this region is, but are also big colors that you naturally find in this area, and will pair nicely with our photography and what already exists here in Newberg. So the next page, I think, is very exciting. These are some screen captures from our website that will be launched shortly, within the next few weeks, hopefully within the first two weeks of March, we'll have a functioning website up and running. So I can just walk you through some of the navigation buttons down at the bottom. You'll see in that left-hand side picture, there are some circles at the bottom of that. We have an events button, an explore option, a sip, dine, and stay button. And those are all, I think, really intriguing, and they are paired with the Oregon Tourism Information System, which allows us to incorporate events and opportunities, attractions that are happening here in the Newberg area and kind of in a very specific region that we think people could come to visit and say Newberg will want to do, and we can direct them to those things all from our website. And so if you see kind of the landing pages for the explore page over on that right side, and each of those navigation buttons at the bottom have a corresponding page that's similar to that. All of those corresponding pages will be populated with this photography library that we are starting to build out. Some of those images that you see there were taken at one of our recent photo shoots, so that gives you a really great idea of what our photography is going to look like. This shows you kind of the style and the taste, if you will, that we're going for. It's bright, and it's inviting, and it's trying to visually encapsulate everything that was explained in that narrative that you listen to and what this presentation is showing. And when we add photographs to this, we try to go through the same artistic style, so that everything is beautiful and looks the same and is visually branded, whether that's from a logo standpoint or just a photography standpoint. And our next page gives you some practical examples of how this branding will be used. You'll see a theoretical magazine cover there in the top right, a billboard in the bottom left. I think that's a great example of how we're kind of pairing the wordmark with the crest. You see them both being used there, not taking away from each other, but working together to get you to engage with the entire piece and realize that we should come Taste Newberg. And you'll see some examples of stationery, that's marketed in a different sense than billboards are, but equally important in using different sizes of our logo in different locations, and just kind of showing how versatile it is and the different ways that it can be used. So we're super excited to roll this out, I guess happy to answer questions, and excited that we do all Taste Newberg.
Questions, folks?
Come on.
Our mouths are watering.
Very young, welcome. Thank you all, that is fantastic. Thank you, thank you so much. City Managers Awards.
Thank you. I believe it's the last for me.
That would be, yeah.
Yeah, the next one, next, they'll see me again, but you'll, I'll be welcoming in Dan, who last time I spoke to him was on his last day of work last Friday, and 10 inches of snow was coming down. So I think he's on his way to pretty quickly to get out of there. Anyway, so, I thought about how I was going to do this report for you tonight, and it occurred to me, you've got a ton of things on the plate going forward, and you're going to hear all about those, and you're working on those day to day. But I thought, maybe just kind of a little bit of a recap of where we've been over the last six months, because sometimes I think it may have looked like or perceived as if there was just about one thing on the agenda, and that was distractions and troubles, as you can characterize it. But honestly, that wasn't the case. I think what I've come to see over these last six months is, yeah, there certainly has been that, but what I've seen is, one, it's been an organization, council, and staff that have been truly mission-focused, has just gone on and done a whole lot of things. I'm going to, I picked some highlights of some of the things that we've accomplished over the last six months. I think it's important to talk about those in the context of what we, you know, this time, not just the, you know, the distractions that have been going on as well. But, you know, I guess what I want to say is, it's been, you know, it really has been an honor working with you. I think we have made some progress, and I think, you know, and I think, I'm proud of what we've done here together. I think the one thing that I set out to do, we accomplished, and I think we accomplished well when I was hiring a new city manager. I think you did a great job. I think you had, you had a large pool of candidates, you had some difficult choices, and you made your way through, and you came up with a sterling candidate. Don't beat him up too hard, give him an opportunity to grow in the position, and I think you're going to have a one-time keeper with, with Dan, one man. You know, back to supporting a little bit of the troubles, we have settled a couple of legal disputes during this time. We have included some, some union negotiations. You have an agreement in front of you tonight to memorialize one of those. We have included some other work in terms of working with our unions during this period. We have hired an interim HR director, who's turned out to be a stellar addition to the, to the cast. We have created together the tissue bracket that you're using as a tool, and I hope that's something that you find is valuable, which is, gives you a little bit of a way of, you know, close the loop on what's going on at council and coming back to council. You engaged in your first ever goal setting, and tonight you have an opportunity to memorialize that as well. So, not as a city, but as this council, your first, your first goal setting. So I thought that was a great effort, and I'm proud of what you've done there. I think you got to some very meaningful core values and goals for the community. There's plenty of other work to be done besides those, but I think that's, just really those are great broad statements. You have, not only have you added this goal, but you started down the path of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We've done that one by authorizing some new work, new position. We came close to filling that. We will be putting that back out with a slight little tweak to get that, that position filled. We have many of our staff, including the mayor and all the councils that wish to, engaged in training through the Center of Equity and Inclusion. That is a very important, very, probably painful to some degree, given the certain self-awareness, but it's, it is a great training to get an understanding of what the world we live in, what the world at some points is living in, that we're always having the same privileges and opportunities that some of the other members of society have. We have, we've hired a public information officer who will, if she ever finishes her night work, will be joining you here in the council meeting tonight. In the meantime, she's been very busy during the day, doing a whole lot of work for our, for the community and the staff, and getting a lot of positive messaging. You've seen her Friday reports, I think those things were just, those are great positive pieces about what's going on in our, in our city, and I was honored by her last one to be included in there. We have equalized pay longevity pay for services. We've taken away an inequity as between the United workforce and the non-organized workforce. We have, we have done a whole lot of other things during the course of our operations. You've accepted an audit, we've approved various library policies, you've adopted and are starting the hard work on implementing a Newberg Vis, Vis Vision Plan. You've adopted the Willamette Front Master Plan, you're starting a hard work of, of starting to work on the Urban Renewal Plan, we'll, that will finance and create the pieces, the visiting pieces of that. You've got a lot of work that's going on in the background in making that happen. You have the West End Mill District that you created as well, because you've approved the Economic Development Strategy. You have kicked off an Economic Opportunity Analysis, things to be done in terms of going, ultimately going urban growthbound. You initiated water rights acquisition and other water supply initiatives. You adopted a water management supply plan, initiated strategic real estate acquisitions for the water treatment plant. You've made, well, you're, you have improvements to the audio system under contract, no doubt you will make those, I think those in some way. You have, you've initiated the 19 You have, you've initiated the nineteen master plan, the first of its kind as well. Uh, you have various levels of construction contracts going on at all times. There's various levels of work being done under those contracts. And finally, and I think most importantly, you will keep resolving this mystery crisis. Jump on that. So it hasn't been just six months of troubles. It's been six months of a lot of work. Congratulations to you. Thank you. Careful in meeting your inner manager during this time.
Well, David, I'll say now, probably you'll probably hear this again, but, um, but thank you. Now, I know the troubles weren't always, but they were certainly the most, uh, uh, demanding part, I'll say, to say the truth. And you helped us navigate some pretty tricky terrain, so can't thank you enough. Have fun in Mexico.
Thanks, I'm almost done.
There you go. There you go. All right, let's, uh, move on to public comments. How's about Ed Friedenberg and Thomas Paine? Fascinated to hear this. Ed, I'm sorry, before you do, to the members of Visit New York to the Board of Directors, I did not get a chance to thank you all for all of your volunteer work. Thank you very much to all of you. Thank you. Thank you. We hope so.
We hope so.
Yeah.
Okay, hi, my name is Ed Friedenberg. And I distribute packets to board members and record the company. And, uh, first of all, I'll try to be maybe three to five minutes and, uh, if you have any questions, you can interrupt me. So we moved here in 2010, and I've enjoyed the land across the street from City Hall. We have the BBQ and food festival, and you have a partners' bar here in Long Island. It's exciting to find out that I understand that you're in the process of selling that thing. And so my proposal is in two parts, really. First of all, I'm a, I'm a big Thomas Paine fan. And, uh, my proposal is, we, given the fact that you're gonna sell the land, that we temporarily name it Thomas Paine Square. It's a nice public gathering place, and, uh, and secondly, uh, you agree to do that, that you would then, uh, upon its sale or after the sale, you would agree to support maybe finding a second location to call Thomas Paine Square or Thomas Paine Bar or something like that. Um, I'll start off by saying, uh, first of all, in the state of Oregon, there's four individuals that have been honored by, uh, having a state commemorate them in Oregon statutes, ORS 287203, by naming a day after that. Tom McCall is one. They all know the government law, most of us remember Governor Tom McCall. His day is March 22nd. Uh, Ewing Young Day, Oregon Pioneer, uh, February 9th. And in fact, I attended a event at the public library the weekend before last, uh, Ewing Young, uh, production. It was very Westin. Happened to be the day before Ewing's birthday, anyway. Then there's a name I remember, but before I have to admit, Menor Menor Yasui. He was a Japanese-American. Uh, his family was interned in, uh, in World War II, when Japanese soldiers were forced in prison camps. He was the first attorney, as I understand, first Japanese-American attorney, led to the University of Oregon, and went on to, uh, be the first Japanese-American attorney in the state, as I understand. And he fought this unfair internment all the way to Supreme Court. And, uh, and his day is March 28th. Now, those three people are all Oregonans. The fourth person's name is Thomas Paine. His statute is, uh, ORS 287225. You can find it in the fifth tab in the brochure handed on. And as far as he's honored among, you know, as he's one of only four people, and the only non-Oregonian, but hadn't been for Tom McPaine, there might not have been a state of Oregon, let alone a magistrate in there. Uh, if you read the, uh, if you go to the second tab in your graph, you'll see there's a biography of, uh, his life that he's done. He came to the colonies in seventeen seventy-four. Uh, he's a friend of Benjamin Franklin. So he was born, he was an Englishman by birth, came here in seventeen seventy-four. Uh, he had, he was a talented writer. He worked for a newspaper, I think, on the editorial, uh, editorial writer. And, uh, he also, his core beliefs were Brotherhood of Man. He was anti-monarchy, anti-slavery, pro-women's rights, pro-human rights. Very much ahead of his time. And he, uh, basically inspired the War of Independence in his publication, Common Sense. A fifty-page pamphlet that surprisingly, it estimated maybe reached twenty percent of the population of the colonies of those days. Even in the dark days of the revolution, uh, when the old Indian Army Reds kept, he inspired, he sustained the spirit of the revolution in a series of letters under the heading of the prices. First one, you probably recall, uh, the first line in the paper number one, "These are the times that triumphed insults." And then finally, he was, not finally, but he also was the person who named America, the United States of America. He was the first one to use the term in his writing. He was the first one to recommend that we call our country the nation, the United States of America. So he does name America. And following the, uh, following the War of Independence, he had an international reputation. He was recruited by the French after the French Revolution, and he was asked to serve in the French Assembly. Which he did, he was a French, but he served in the Assembly. And, uh, he had the audacity to argue that the Queen and Queen should be dead. So this is not a good thing for a Democrat or a Republican to do. And unfortunately, that went on the wrong side of the militant faction that supported the French Revolution, and he got thrown in jail, imprisoned. He served, he was imprisoned about a year, came close to death. Uh, he contracted typhoid fever, I think, this is probably. And, uh, on the day before, he was scheduled to be guillotined. And the way they marked the cell doors, the people who were to be guillotined, they put an X on his door. Well, they had opened up the door that evening, gave him some air, so he could survive the next day to be guillotined. And unfortunately, then the next, uh, two of the guards came through. The door was closed, and they couldn't see the exit, so he escaped, narrowly escaped.
I could get you to just wrap it up a little bit, thanks.
Pardon me?
Oh, if you could just, summation would be great at this point.
A summation at this point, okay. Uh, okay, so he died in eighteen oh-nine, New York. Uh, but that's not the end of the story. The end of the story, about ten years after he died, an Englishman by the name of, admired by the name of William Cobbitt, in the dark of the night dug up his coffin, put it on a ship, sent it back to England. And I heard David Rock, he wanted to put it in a carnival show in New York or else. He wanted to honor Thomas Paine with a proper burial for his leaving hand. Anyway, there's, uh, in the third tab, I believe, the history of what happened with Thomas Paine's remains. The problem now is that we lost it. These bones have been, you know, a few of the series of, uh, ownership or custodianship, and they've since been lost. And so we don't have a place to honor Thomas Paine. And so, and the last, and the fourth tab in here is an opinion piece. So I hesitate to, I hesitated to include it here because it's in faulty language and, uh, uncomprehendably, this is a piece written by a writer for the Philadelphia Weekly back in two thousand and six, which is the three hundredth anniversary of Ben Franklin's murder. They had a big celebration for Ben Franklin. But this individual is comparing the accomplishments and the impact that Tom Paine had in the world with Ben Franklin. It was hard on, I'll say it rather, it was hard on Ben Franklin. And the third reason is that he obviously revealed some sort of left-wing, uh, left-wing political views, which some of you may not be comfortable with. But I would encourage you to read it because the writer makes the point that the whole celebration going on in Philadelphia at that time to honor Ben Franklin, the role he always told us many, and we don't, haven't the way to, no monuments, no parks, no streets named after him, and so that's, anyway, that's my question.
Thank you. Any questions, folks? Well, thank you. Thank you for your time. We have, uh, for everyone on public comments, we will put your request on what we call the issue tracker. And so it will be something that we will review at each meeting, um, and then we can follow it from there. Okay? Thank you. Thanks so much for your time. All right, next, Ms. Pat Haid, please. I think it should be okay.
Well, I couldn't hear it back there, so I don't know.
Well, can, can you hear it in the back, folks? Yes, okay.
I guess since he got eight or nine or ten minutes, I guess.
I guess that's the going rate tonight, I guess, sure.
You hold your own rule?
No, I, you know?
Okay. I'm here tonight because we're all new people on the city council, et cetera, at least. And she's seen me through bad and better and worse. I'm concerned about, uh, two things tonight. The first thing is, I called, uh, to the Public Works Maintenance Office, to the manager, Wes Sana, and he wasn't in, and so he did a phone message, he stopped there. And so then I called back to the department, and nobody answered. And so then I called in the human resources lady, and I, all I wanted to know was how many people are working in the Public Works Department? And she didn't know. So I assume there's probably at least twenty people working in the Public Works. Does anybody here know? You know how many people are working in the Public Works? I don't think we would. You can't have a department that important in this town and not have somebody answer the phone. If there was a water main or sewer, some major problem, you better have somebody there to answer the phone and get the word out that somebody needs help in this town. That is, that's a person. The next thing I'm concerned about is our money. Matt just gave me a little information that helped me see the true story here. You weren't here a few years ago. We had a city manager named Dan Dana Chief. He had a little affair thing. Uh, the city paid him a hundred thousand dollars in due way. And then there was another city manager who was doing a really good job, and she was very qualified. But it was interesting because the mayor at that time came to my garage sale, and I hadn't been to a meeting for a while, and I said, "What's new with the city?" And he winked over to me and he says, "Well, we have a new city manager now, and she's asked him too many questions." And two weeks later, the paper, they gave her a hundred thousand, and she rapped. She got the last one. We all know about Anna Lee at this point. She got a hundred thousand out of our pocket, too. And, um, Jeremy Fair, he was a, I think he was a part-time cop. He had a little affair. I don't know if he got paid anything or not, though. And then we had a man who applied to the job, and he was highly qualified for it, but because he was black, he promised two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now Matt tells me, "Oh, that didn't come out of our pocket." Because I wanted to know what fund this money's coming out of. And he's just, "Well, away are all these people, and they're leaving." And he said, "Well, it's the insurance." The money comes from the insurance. Well, Matt agreed. "We, we pay for the insurance." And all these claims, if it's like car insurance, it's, it's not getting cheaper here. How many more people are you gonna give a hundred thousand dollars to? What fund does that money come out of? I would like to know that. Because this man sat over here and talked about the streets being all falling apart, and he can't get from one side to the other. And we're talking seven hundred thousand dollars. It's just out the friggin' window. Now how can you sit there as a city council and know this and let this happen? I hope you'll see the light here. Because that's not the way the manager sits. Or a business. You don't pay your guy to screw up your business, money to leave. Why would you do it for a city like this when the people, you're working for the people? I don't think you guys even maybe knew about all this. I don't think you would have been the ones who voted on this. Who decided that this money went out? Can you tell me where? Who decided? Who makes that decision on Dana Chief and Jeremy and Jackie Betts and Anna Lee? Who said, "Okay, let's give her a hundred thousand and see if she'll leave"?
I don't know that I can answer those ones in the past. But in, can I answer the one regarding, um, the settlement, say, with the patent case? Okay, so again, that was a determination by the insurance company after the case, after we lost the case. And that was their decision.
So you didn't have a case?
Well, that's what the jury found.
How much did that cost us?
The what?
The attorney for the lawsuit and all of that. That must have cost us two thousand dollars or two.
Yeah, I don't know if he had.
I got a key here, and it was for us. Who did make that decision?
Well, again, the, okay, uh, the council was kept apprised to a degree about the, you know, the goings-on with the legal process. But once it came time to decide what to do with that, it was the insurance company, if you're correct me if I'm wrong, that determined that it would be better to settle than to appeal the case, in the case of the patent.
So what fund did that money come from?
And that I'd have to defer to Matt in terms of...
Did you just get a check from the insurance company?
Yeah, well, the insurance, yeah, it came from insurance, yes.
You just got a check from the company? So tell me this, with all these claims, how much does our insurance cost when that's getting in this town?
Yeah, I have to defer to Matt to...
That's a good question, Matt.
We'd be happy to visit separately at the end of City Hall and go through all of your questions, if you'd like, in terms of financial questions.
Oh, I don't want to talk to her. We all want all these people in this town here.
They don't have the information. They don't have the question.
It's called transparency. We have a right to know. You're working for us. We would like to know what you're asking us, because some of us can't afford to live there anymore. Do you understand that?
We can, we can get that answer. We don't, if we don't have it now, we can get the answer. For the insurance cost, you're asking about what fund does the insurance claim come from? Uh, and how many people in Public Works? Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Haid. Um, Merrill Kumpel, please.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, councilors, Mr. Mayor. My name is Merrill, and I chair the New York Sustainable Solutions Group. Um, I'm here today, Council, responding quickly to petition we submitted last fall by engaging with Waste Management in order to explore composting options. Um, as a resident, I'm very excited to hear that Waste Management can start offering composting after approval from Council. While I think we all understand the environmental benefits, there has been much talk about what this would mean in terms of costs and services. While I think we all understand the environmental benefits, there has been much talk about what this would mean in terms of costs and services. Um, I believe when we're considering price increases for services, we should always consider the most valuable in our community for whom an increase might be cost prohibitive. Um, it's for that reason that I urge Council to approve a resolution that would begin the composting program, uh, at the current yard waste pickup schedule, um, for only an additional 71 cents a month. Um, I believe that 71 cents, or an increase in 71 cents, would be the best option in order to be sensitive to the effects of price increases while also addressing the environmental concerns of food waste and methane in our landfills. Um, I also wanted to inform you all that our Sustainable Solution Group has been in contact with waste management, and we are willing to support the important educational aspects, um, that will make this program more successful. Uh, we will do this through informational nights as well as flyers and posters about composting and recycling. Um, I've chatted with Dean and Dave, and they have offered that should Castle approve, they could get composting off the ground pretty quickly. And, um, we are willing to host an informational night for the community, um, to talk about what that means and changes with our services. And, um, they'll bring composting bags and, um, really just try and, uh, support the educational aspect. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Wallace, please.
Good evening, Rebecca Wallace, uh, New York, Oregon. Uh, I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but, uh, the work session led me into this. Uh, first, I wanna say that people that are really hard of hearing, they, there needs to be some better hearing accommodations for people that are that, like that, in the back. Um, I, I don't know if it's just like the noise or whatever, but there's been a few times that I've been in the back, and, uh, people with hearing aids have a really hard time hearing, so I don't know how that can be fixed, but, uh, they can't hear. Um, there was, it was, it was a tad bit confusing during the work session, um, to have council guidelines brought up again. It was a little like, uh, the Van Wagenen curtain kind of, uh, thought process going on, like what's, what's really happening here. But it, it really got my, my mind to thinking about, well, it is a good, it is a good thing to talk about council guidelines again. Um, I've been here before talking about council guidelines and, um, well, uh, the things that, that had happened, um, before and, uh, how addressing, how addressing the people that come to speak. But, uh, I'll, I'll read one. Uh, Rule 3.8 D says, "Conducting themselves in a manner so as to bring discredit upon the government of the city." Uh, 3.93, "Ensure that all are heard and encourage participation." 3.9, well, uh, there, really everything in 3.9 applies lately, it seems like, to, uh, several members of council. Um, 3.11, uh, not A, 3.11A, "Not interfering with the day-to-day," which is the responsibility of the city manager. Well, we've heard that since, uh, October of last year. And, um, well, it was made known, uh, through personal opinions on personal Facebook accounts, um, where maybe some councils were speaking as themselves and not as a city, as a whole. Um, so in my humble opinion, uh, when a city council member has a, uh, Facebook page that's named after themselves, then it's definitely their own personal opinion when they're speaking on their own personal page. Um, and I feel that way for everyone who has a, a personal page, which is quite beautiful. Um, if a member of the council, to include the mayor, appears in their personal capacity to give a statement on an issue, well, the member must state they're expressing their own opinion, not that the city before doing their statement. So that's why I think, like, if, if the heading of their personal page is themselves, then that's their personal opinion. Anyway, um, there are some things that happened over the last, uh, week that were mind-boggling. There were statements by the city manager that were put out. Um, there were, uh, comments by council members, and we find out that, um, a member of this, uh, council had said that a statement from our union, the police department union, needed to be redrafted. And I'm saying that here in the microphone. Um, that, that is very concerning to me, that an elected official would attempt to make some kind of, I don't know, uh, action towards, I don't agree with that, you need to redo that. That's, I, I don't have anything more to say about that, because that's just a calling, but... Um, so even though the council guidelines being brought up might be a, a little confusing to some people, um, as to why, it's apparent, um, that there's divisiveness among this council, uh, which brings me to, uh, who censures the mayor when these guidelines are broken? Because, you know, we were happy to get your apology, I mean, of this power leak for coming and speaking, um, to you guys. But, uh, where does that censure Congress? Um, I think that there's some things that probably need to be addressed in however you guys do that to talk to each other privately, but, um, there definitely is divisiveness among the council, and there's back-talking and whatever. Um, but we, we saw a public email from David Klein that went to one of our, um, community members about that whole conversation, um, to the city. And if you're supposed to be allowing the city to do their own business, and, and the elected officials aren't supposed to be getting involved in that, then why did that meeting even take place in the first place? That's what I see.
Thank you. All right. Susan Elvin-Ball, please.
Thank you, Mayor Rogers and city council members, for the opportunity to make public comment tonight. I would like to speak about the recent parts of recall. Why would a small group of individuals even consider doing this? It's irresponsible and shameful to blame our mayor and council members for incidents and problems which occurred before they were even sworn in to their seats. While our mayor and city council members are all focused on solving past problems and existing tensions in an effort to make our city government work well and our community livable, welcoming, and successful, a small group of individuals are going to great lengths to do just the opposite. Mayor Rogers and our council members have not demonstrated misconduct, incompetence, or failure to perform their official duties. Mr. Klein just went through six months of accomplishments that you have all done, and thank you for sharing them. This recall effort seems to be more of a pushback directly towards the mayor's and council members' political leaning, rather than a lack of competence or failure in their jobs. Today, I call our city council clerk, I called him, Brian Van Bergen, and I asked him how much a recall election would cost taxpayers. Mr. Van Bergen stated, quote, "It would cost taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars." To put it in perspective, the repeal, the repeal of the ordinance that protects McMinnville's ambulance and fire department from nursing home non-emergency calls cost taxpayers in McMinnville $69,000. Tens of thousands of dollars. Say that a couple times in your mind. And an example of wasteful spending comes to my mind, and I believe it will come to many, many members in this community. I would like those individuals supporting a recall election to consider another problem this would create. After you gather the necessary signatures, and the signatures are verified, the election must occur 30 days later. One of Brian Van Bergen's biggest concerns outside the enormous cost of this election is that this recall election very well may overlap our May primary election, causing mass confusion among voters. He envisions voters putting wrong ballots in wrong envelopes and sending them in. He also is concerned about the confusion that voters may have and be so disgusted with the whole thing that they will fail to turn in ballots at all. This is really concerning to me. We have a major election coming up in May, the primary election, and I certainly don't want voters to be discouraged from voting, and I don't want there to be confusion with ballots. I think it's unfair to voters. I think it's unfair to taxpayers and the majority of voters who elected our mayor and are pleased with his work and that of the city council. I would really like to ask the group of individuals who are working on this recall to please reconsider going forward with their efforts.
Thank you. Let's take a, a three-minute break, please. Bring this meeting back into order. Issue Tracker, where do you lose our... He's had enough. Aaron, come here. He's done.
I have no feeling. It's gonna take a class.
Yeah. Anybody, uh, Issue Tracker comments? Do we have anything on there that, any updates on Issue Tracker that anyone knows of?
Um, all of the updates are in the italics.
Okay.
So, um...
I have a problem with one of them.
Okay.
Um, the P flag one, it says, "Work session scheduled for June 1st, so we're gonna miss, people are gonna miss Friday." So... Um, David would be the one that he's not in the room with. I feel like that's a little, I feel like we can fix that, because that's why they came, like, on very long time ago. It's not, yeah.
And did we, did we...
I requested that on the call.
Yeah, and on that one, were we looking for other model ordinance?
Just, yeah.
That's what we were looking for, right? That's what we wanted, somebody that we could find another place to... There he is. We thought we lost him.
Yeah, we thought we...
Yeah. Um, we're on, uh, Issue Tracker.
Ms. Kinnear.
Yes, sir.
Could I just, I, I did send out a, um, brief memo by email to the council and response to the flag issue, uh, in the past, um, that you might wanna come back and take a look at. It was not a full analysis, um, which, uh, the city manager didn't tackle, but we're not all we've done since. It just says everybody here that, that was, uh, done, and, uh, a week, 10 days in that meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
That's right. The P flag, flag.
The pride flag?
The, the, we're asking about the, uh, work sessions. It's kind of a huge, uh...
David's the report on February 18th during Issue Tracker.
Back on the, I hit you on memory, uh...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. Um...
We have a couple.
So Doug Rex. So, yes, back on the call, a question was raised about pride flag. Um, a couple weeks ago, it was passed. I took on the responsibility. All right?
Of course you do.
Of course. Um, so I gathered that from my back and pulled the information that came up a little over a year ago, communications between, uh, former city manager Hannah and myself, right? A very long email asking a lot of questions about what was being asked at that one time. Uh, Russ Thomas had previously done some background research on polls, by polls, and, uh, Sue is searching for that particular email. Russ was gone for a month. And so I can, I'm gathering that up. Once I have all of the information gathered up, then I will sit down with the appropriate department staff and have a conversation. Part of this is, is we have sign regulations related to flags. We have policy issues that need to be developed about flags, because if you allow one organization in a flag, does that get to, do you, how many other organizations? And what other organizations? So, city attorney had done some research on a couple of communities. He passed that information on to me within the last couple of weeks as well. That's kind of where I'm at with it, given all of the other stuff.
Is there a chance that a work session could happen before June 1st? The pride month? I know, it's a tough ask, tough ask.
That would be a conversation that the new city manager and I are gonna have to have, given all the other work responsibilities.
You also have a fairly hoarse set of work sessions coming up, so, so if we squeeze in, it just would be shared with, on arrival.
I, I mean, I, I understand everything that Doug's saying, and, I mean, it's another thing on top of everything Doug's doing. But something as simple as a group of individuals coming, that comes forward to express their concern for safety for our population, seems unacceptable in my mind to have a nine-month lag to respond to them. And especially everything that just happened with George Fox with the suit coming out. I don't feel like it's acceptable to wait till June. So if that means that, you know, I do some research and look into some different flag ordinances, I would be happy to do that, but I really would like there to be some sort of response to the five of us.
I will share, I'm, I'm guessing that there's probably a sense of people urgency in the council. I will share with Dan, will we, I will listen to Dan, I will share with him, that at least is one, it's one surison. It is a complicated issue, that part of it escaping, you know, it is, there's a mix of legal issues as well as practical issues surrounding it. Flags, it's not, there's not a reticence per se for, for P flags. That's not the issue at all. It's not about what, what it's allowing. It, it's about the, it's about the other legalities and qualities that are involved, fairness issues that it handles.
Oh, and even if our, what, even if our response is like, we can't because of X, Y, and Z, but we could do other ways to show that we're an inclusive city or our ultra-tycoon community of like, you know, bumpers, you know, like the stickers in the city hall, whatever it is. But I just think really, I really want the flag along, and...
So, councilor, so, so part of that is some analysis that Russ had done, is there's some protocols on flag poles. If you were at city hall, you see the three flags. Well, there's not a room for a fourth flag.
Okay.
And so we get issues about flag, size of flags, number of flags. It may require additional flag poles, because we don't have public, city-owned flag poles that possibly can accommodate it all.
Okay.
Question has come up in the past about, well, what about banners and so forth? Well, we have sign regulations on banners. We don't control the content, but those banners then could be on private property. That might be another way to approach it. So the focus has kind of been on, you know, a flag hanging from a flag pole, but there may be other options that are out there, which I outlined in a, you haven't seen a prior email about what is actually being asked for, and here's a whole litany of options.
Okay.
Well, the other thing, and I'd always suggest this to any group, is that, you know, if there is a certain thing that you are particularly interested in, any legwork you can do in advance is always helpful, I would imagine, to sound. If that's proven to be that case, I mean, we could probably send that information, that thought back to P flag, too, and say, if you know of other ordinances in other communities, or how other communities are handling it, um, that would be great to know. So, you know, this, this is... Uh, anything else on Issue Tracker?
Was there anything, were there things from this evening that you wanted to add, make consensus?
Things from this evening? Um, I mentioned, I'd like to get Pat Haid her, her answers for those three questions of hers. Um, and I can, I can take that with, with Matt and, uh, figure that out.
Can we add this? Is there a Thomas Paine?
Yes, there's Thomas Paine, this guy.
Is there something you want us, something to do with that Thomas Paine, yeah?
I, I guess it'd be just asking to know what would it take to rename a piece of city property? What, you know, the procedure might be. What, you know, the procedure might be.
Do I? Anybody? When I do that, because I'm looking for consensus, so again, the way we had...
Oh, yeah, so are we, are we, are we okay to try to get an idea of what that might take to change the name or something?
Yeah, so, you know, why should I purposefully?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, for sure.
Um, can I? This is maybe already kind of been said, but, um, a YouTube with the sidewalks issue stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Wait. Is that reasonable or am I getting...
Yeah. I, I absolutely agree, oh, it's your, alright. I absolutely agree, and I also want to make clear that earlier I was not suggesting we put off the sidewalk program for twenty-four months, I was saying we do everything at the same time, because we seem to be really, really, Doug especially, and so is Karen, really good at doing multiple things at once, so, thanks, guys.
Alright, is that it for issue tracker then? Not at all? Alright. Uh, consent calendar, item seven on the program.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, hearing none, the consent calendar passes. Moving on to continued business, alright, this is a, my understanding, this is a second reading, and David, you've got this one?
Yeah, this, this, they come to you in first reading, on first reading, there was some suggested language that be added by, uh, Council Johnson, and that language specifically, and I don't know where that ended up falling, I don't have a exact version for the, the redline version in front of me, but the, uh, the language was, uh, has a, consists with budget, a budget restriction. Um, we talked about that a lot, and honestly, we'd like to ask you to not include that language. You, the point of this, why this ordinance came to you, the first list, was to provide fewer stops in front of council for work, for work at a level that, uh, that typically would be where people may pass on to the city manager, the city, the city staff, um, so they have fewer stops coming here, you know, you still control by virtue of anything over a hundred thousand, you still control by virtue of the budget, you still control by way of the appropriations process. By adding in that language here, we set up the opportunity for a little bit of conflict between the other controlling documents, and if anything, we might send this back to you more often, not less often, for matters, because that they're not here, but not there. Uh, I can cite you, this was some example where we struggled down earlier today, talking about that, how, you know, the three of us, Matt, myself, and the city attorney, so once that language came together, and we didn't have, didn't have a good understanding of that, I'm just wondering what happened next to this. We know what restrictions are under the budget, we know what restrictions are under appropriations, so we know what restrictions are under operators, state law, and feasibly purchasing. So, what I'd ask you is not if you just pull that phrase back out and go back to city ordinance versus the present.
Alright. Matt, you're there, you suggested the language, what are your thoughts?
I, it wasn't a deal killer, we were just suggesting, so, um, you know, but, I'm not sure, so, I'm trying to, is it, I, I cannot, I couldn't find the language in there, is it, is it in there now, or do we need to...
Yeah, I can answer that. On page one, uh...
Of course.
Section one, uh, if you look under the section that says the city of Newburgh ordains as follows, section one, under general authority, uh, section A, third sentence down, you'll easily find a hundred thousand dollar numerical digit there, after that, it says...
Oh, yeah, okay, proposed, yeah.
And the proposed expenditure is included in the current fiscal year budget, that was, that was the only addition I made.
So, Mr. Mayor, finally.
Sure.
So, Truman, hi, how you doing? Um, if we want to ax that language, do we need to bring it back again, or do, can we, with the motion, just ax out or make that it? Ordnances are confusing.
Point of origin, the city manager's hugging the microphone.
This was last night.
Truman, so the city attorney, um, you can make a motion to adopt the ordinance with the amendment of, and then read the language to be deleted. As much as, as a practical matter, when you're making changes on the fly at a council meeting, it's simpler to delete language than to add language, because once we add language, that, there's a requirement that, well, it, it's a little harder to capture it, you know, especially if there are major changes, but then there are provisions about making the language available to the public, um, which are that same rule that requires ordinances to be posted seven days ahead of time or be read in full, so it, it kind of complicates it. So, just, just procedurally, as much as you're to delete something, especially something relatively minor than it is to add things on the fly at a meeting.
Now, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I might, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty, twenty eight, fifty six, and delete the language under section one that says, and the proposed expenditures included in the current fiscal year budget.
And you might add a little...
And read by title.
Second. Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Actually, I do, and this, kids, is why you want to always follow council rules, because had I emailed this question to staff prior to the last meeting, we probably wouldn't be going through this exercise tonight, so, now it's on me, so I will expect my flogging later.
Consider yourself flogged. Alright, further discussion deliberation. We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Yes, by title only.
By title.
By title only, yes, sir, thank you, yes, sir.
Ordinance number two zero two zero dash two eight five six, an ordinance pending in Newburgh municipal, relating to purchasing and contracting pertaining to the authorization limit of the city manager, as well as the limit for small procurements awarded at the solicitation agent's discretion. And it does require a recall vote, but it could be the ordinance.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Yarne Hallman. Counselor Martinez Pancarte.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
Counselor Bacon.
Yes.
Counselor Finland.
Yes.
Votes seven zero.
Alright, item nine, um, this is new business regarding council goals. Mr. Klein, is that you as well?
That is.
Alright.
So, uh, get that opened up to you. So, this is followed from the goal setting session that she would had on January eighteenth, where you met on day, um, the results of which I believe are encapsulated in Exhibit A, I, I did take upon myself, you had it somewhat of shorthand, I did take upon myself to try to reduce, to express that as goal language. Uh, I shared with the mayor, he gave me a few suggestions, and so I wrote, this is back in front of you, I actually crafted the, alright, the request for council action as well, all of my notes, I thought I was having a problem with this, I really haven't done this, because I didn't hear that's much help. This is what you have, as well as the resolution. So, I, I, I think, uh, I think, you know, you have those, I don't know if you have comments on those, questions on those, if those in fact accurately reflect, uh, what you felt like you had set out as council goals, next steps, if you choose to adopt these this evening, is to send staff on its way to develop a strategic plan that will, will provide measurable results surrounding these goals, timeframes, as well as other work that's underway with the city into one comprehensive document that should cover a period of some three or five years.
The only, okay, and this is just weird bad stuff, you guys are getting used to it. Um, there are newer ones, it seems a little odd to me to have, I mean, this is just my opinion, um, it seems a little odd to me to have a feasibility study where we're trying to set up boundaries and such, and then having the goal basically boundaries, that, that to me just seemed a little cart before the horse-ish, but it's not something I've voted against them for, but I just thought, just looked a little...
The fact that we're assuming that the downtown...
Yeah, downtown and riverfront, I mean, you know, I, I'm just, you know, and, and I think everybody who's intellectually honest will say that's the most likely place this is gonna go, but just from a process standpoint, I kind of went, oop, and, because I'm not sure we're there yet with the feasibility group, but...
So, putting a period after authority and calling it a day?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
No, it's, no, I think everybody's, I think everybody's, any, anything else, any other comments on this? On this or all of it?
All of it.
Yeah, I, I like the wording that you use to make it sound better.
The one thing that I'm totally, like, just the workforce housing, because I feel like that was kind of thrown in there at the last minute of like, I don't know how much we've done conversation as a council on the workforce housing portion, I know it's important, and I know that we want to encourage all that, um, but I would also say that I feel equally, not just as, you know, maybe more passionate about homelessness.
Well, we could also just, and just affordable housing is the broader category, and drop workforce. That's a more encompassing phrase.
That doesn't mean a lot. I mean, but I like mining it more, because affordable housing, you know, more, or are you compatible?
Could we add in there with a focus on our houses' population or something?
Or even temporary, uh, like, uh... Temporary affordable housing or something.
Affordable, okay, so, well, and, and housing for the unhoused or something like that as well.
Mm-hmm.
We add language like that, adding the, yeah, housed in that.
The last, last meeting I went to was your group actually, the reference term they used was the houseless.
Houses.
Some reference in this, yes, I don't know if I can believe this name, it's still a bar, taxes might used to hide a little something, houseless, sir.
This information from the house, it kind of, it's a word.
So, yeah, I mean, I agree with, with that statement, but every time I've said, you know, homelessness with affordable housing, it's been, it's been stated that homelessness is not affordable housing, it's not the same conversation.
So, councilor, I'll throw this out for suggestion.
You could say something, promote development of housing affordability, including houselessness, transitional housing. You're giving examples, but you're not stating exactly what it is, and that leaves, that leaves that to staff to go through the strategic plan to kind of develop and flesh that out.
I like that.
Thank you.
Alright, is that enough editing? Can we still go on? And will we have the changes, or do you want to bring it back to us?
That's how we can bring this back to you, or we can get busy on the next phase, which is the strategic planning.
I, I'm...
You good? You good with those edits? And you got the edits captured well enough for them?
Sure, yeah.
Of course, of course. Well, the ones, just a period of slice of the rest of the sentence, right? We got that.
I mean, this is all coming back to you as part of the strategic plan, this is what that goes in, of course, I'm not going to forward this, I'm afraid any further, but that's a conversation I'm having with Dan and whatnot, you, you'll be on the ban if he doesn't deliver what I just told you.
Yep, so if I was to go back on the, on the housing one, when I wrote down promote development of housing affordability such as costlessness, transitional housing, and workforce housing.
Yes.
Very good.
Like all the S's.
Very good. Alright. Alright, this is a resolution, folks.
Mr. Mayor.
There it is.
No, no, all you, all you.
Alright, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty dot dash three six four one, ratifying our council goal.
Second.
Moved and seconded, further discussion. Hearing none.
As amended.
As amended, thank you, as amended, thank you. Um, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, council goals pass. Alright, alright, council committee and community reports ten A.
Well, I guess, oh...
Our way, our way.
Never, never the chance to talk about the bypass, um, and not my, or my, I know, what am I gonna do with bypasses over there? Get a different hobby. Um, first off, I want to thank Mayor Rogers, uh, for, and, uh, for this past week, there was a request by Marion County, uh, for a letter to support the original interchange, and we're trying to get some, some federal funding, and that's an important piece to the regional transportation, uh, issues, and, um, Doug did yeoman's work and was really quick, and Rick signed it, and we, we got it all worked out, so, I, I just wanted to give kudos, because that's, that's, that was awesome. Uh, I did not attend the last river renewal meeting as I was in Disneyland, and no, I'm not ready for city council of Disneyland. Um, and Thursday I have a bypass meeting where I'm sure we'll be discussing strategies of when and where to testify down in Salem, so, um, that's the second piece I want to remind everybody is that I work down there, I'm blocks from the Capitol, so if you do have a, an issue and some talking points and you'd like someone to testify, feel free to forward those to me, and I can do that for you, if you just, I would require talking points, so, um, and that's pretty much my rant.
This one I can tell about Lori Albright's class.
Oh, sure.
Um, I had opportunity, being a workplace, I had the opportunity to get in on two things the last week, one was with Doug Brooks in the Mountain View, but the really good one was Lori Albright's fifth grade class at Maple Rush, where my daughter was schooling, which was my first. Um, I was given the opportunity to pretend to be a city councilor and listen to two groups of students talk about whether the river should have a dam or not a dam, it was very interesting. There was, uh, another teacher who was the mayor and then another, I think it was a student teacher, yeah, was the other city councilor, and that opened up, and Lori got them to ask questions and learn a bit more about what city council is like, and their proposals to make decisions, and they were, they were quite intrigued, and I pulled it off.
Nice. Any one else?
Yeah, and...
Yeah, there you go. Uh, what about design, sir? Where did design start?
I did go to design.
You got it, there you go.
This is my, was my eleventh year, we got only, no, my tenth year, I believe, is one year, and, and eleven years, it was excellent, they get better every year, those kids, better every year.
Yeah, it's gratifying to hear them recite Doug Brooks-isms.
He gets to go by him a lot.
Came from Doug, I'm sorry, we're not saying him. Um, and I think we've got a busy evening schedule coming up, I think that we have the cog, who's going to the cog dinner? Anybody?
Is that Thursday?
Yeah, Thursday.
That's, well, there's one tomorrow night.
The breakfast.
Well, that is tomorrow, but then the cog, oh, that's something else, the cog dinner is tomorrow night, Thursday.
Oh, yeah, we're not cool enough to be invited to the cog dinner.
Yeah.
It's like, it's hilarious.
You're, you're, you're welcome to go in my stead, I could probably, you're welcome to.
I'd go.
Yeah. And then Thursday, we're hosting, we're hosting Thursday, and then Symphony Friday. I don't know what y'all are doing Saturday, but, there you go. Probably watching the Ladybug session. Alright, anything else for the good of the order, folks? Alright, let's go. Sure.